I said.
Good evening. You're now viewing the Scottsville Town Council meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021. This is the town council's regular business meeting for the month. This meeting is being held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act, open meeting laws, and the town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. That means that we're in hybrid meeting format. We're here physically at Victory Hall, 401 Valley Street, the town office. We also have opportunities for the public to participate remotely, on Zoom and by telephone. We also have the opportunity, under our continuity of government ordinance, for members of the council to participate online and remotely as may be necessary. If you're watching this recording in the future on the town's YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is eight minutes until seven o'clock, which is the scheduled starting time on our meeting. So we're still assembling our quorum and getting organized for the meeting. If you want to skip ahead on your video, eight minutes, you'll see the mayor bang the gavel and will come to order. Thank you very much for your participation.
All the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Council Bullock.
Here.
Council Gritso.
Here.
Councilor, what a more pleasure.
Here.
Council Hite.
Here.
Council Wesson.
Here.
And Council Fix.
Here.
Thank you. So let us all stand together and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two on our agenda this evening is approval of the consent calendar, which includes approval of this agenda, the financial reports for September 2021, which you find in your package here, and I don't imagine has changed significantly since our work sessions.
The financial pack report now permits you have the August 16th ones in front of you.
Okay. Any, any changes that you know of in those that from the original minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I have a change to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
You do?
I'll need to refuse myself for item 6C, the second half of that, that appointment for personal reasons.
Okay. All right. That is duly noted. And now is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the change into the agenda?
Some good.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. At this point, we have what we call the public forum. I'm sort of copying the way Mayor Grove did this. If you have something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to speak to, you're welcome to do that. If you have something that's to speak to that is on the agenda, you will certainly have a few minutes to do that when that item comes up for discussion. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Hey, Matthew, tell everybody who you are.
I'm Matthew Horace. I just had something I wanted to kind of bring up. You notice it was happening after the two planning meetings ago. And what happened was the sharing was reported, and the question was whether or not the people that were against, who was the upper bird, whoever was against it, or the reason why they take that, whether or not they were residents. That was the first time I really heard that. And then at the next meeting, anyone who spoke had to say whether or not they were residents. And then at the planning meeting, anyone who spoke publicly had to give their address. So it seems to be, at least if I have to look at it, it seems to me that there's a segregation of public opinion or the possibility. And I wanted to point out that Scottsville financially exists because of the great Scottsville area and the support it receives from people outside the town. We know for good reason, the residents don't support the town financially with their taxes. We know that. We got a levy out of it. We got a lot of good services from Almar County. We know that. There's no worry. But without the support of the great Scottsville area, we don't believe about that. And I really don't think that their voices should be segregated out. Just for me, I work here in town. On my side of the road, there's one building that's owned by the person who runs the business. But his residence in Charlotte. This side of the road, one person owns the building that his business is in. His residence is in Buckingham. We go down Main Street, there's about three buildings owned by people that run their businesses. None of them are residents. So if you want to segregate out the voice of non-residents, then you probably segregate it out the Chamber of Commerce. You can probably segregate it out of all the businesses and the people that come here and support it. And I've been coming to these meetings since January, and I don't remember a discussion as to whether or not non-residents or residents have different weight. It was suggested to me that those that have a vote have a voice. So I'm hoping that's not happening. But I really think if you were going to segregate it, that it should be a discussion. We should get a motion. There should be a second, and then we should vote for public record. But if not, then I don't think it's really right to sit there and decide or make people announce whether or not they're residents. We're all from the Scottsville area. We all financially support here. We come here and set up our businesses. We take our chances to set up our businesses. We do a lot of stuff. I just don't believe in time.
Thank you, Matthew. It's a good point that you make, and I think what we should do perhaps is either next work session or one of the next couple of work sessions, we'll have that on our list of things to talk about. And I know you usually come to the work sessions too, so you'll be able to listen to that conversation. So we will let you know, you can check with, before the work session with Matt or Thomas and find out if we're going to talk about it that particular second Monday in November, or we're going to wait till December to do it. Okay? Thank you for bringing that forward. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? We'll close the public forum. My report is not a whole lot different than what I gave at the work session. I have been meeting with the Planning Commission Chairman and just, just talking about different things regarding possible development of sites in and around Scottsville. I have also spent a lot of time with our new acting chief of police, Gary Pasolka, and he is getting his, the office all straight there. He's caught up on some things that needed to be caught up on, and he is real excited. He's been trying to meet as many people in town as he can. He said he takes a couple of walks up and down Valley Street and Main Street today and tries to stick his head in somewhere and say hello and introduce himself. So that's good. So he is paving the way for our permanent chief, who is expected January 1st, who will be currently, is currently serving as a mayor, ma- major with the Almar County Police Department, Greg Jenkins. He will be coming onboard January 1st as our permanent police chief. So we were saddened when Chief Boe Winkle decided to resign. He's just, you come to a point in life where you feel like maybe your family is more important at the moment, and he, he really wanted to spend more time with his family and I think doing some farming and riding his tractor. So we, we have no hard feelings, and he did a great job while he was our chief, and we just, we hated to lose him, but we have taken the steps to see that the department continues to grow in professionalism. And if you need to, want to meet the new chief, acting chief, feel free to stop by. He's, he, this morning, he noted a couple of vehicles exceeding the speed limit, and that's why you may have seen one of the town police vehicles parked at the foot of the bridge with the lights flashing, is sort of a warning to those coming down the bridge that you need to slow down in town. So he is proactive in a lot of areas. Reports from charter committees, item number five. Any questions for me? Okay. Let's start on the end with Mr. Bullock.
Mr. Mayor, actually, not, not a question, but just to say to you, thank you for all the work that you did. I know that was a difficult and a challenging.
Well, it was sort of a surprise move, and we had to act fast because we didn't want to, we didn't want the town to be unprotected, and there was, you know, always a possibility, well, you know, the accreditation authority is saying, well, you don't have a police force, so you don't have one anymore. And that, that didn't happen. So it was a lot of people putting their heads together and got, got that done. Thank you.
Well, I just mentioned it just from the public record that I think people should know that our mayor was very proactive in resolving that situation and creative in doing some things both with us as council and with the various contacts he had to help in a difficult situation. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're all certainly welcome. With the daughter that worked for the state police and the daughter as a federal agent, and having been in the police and law enforcement myself, I know the importance of having honest and trustworthy individuals and having them available when you need them. So thank you again. Mr. Bullock, you would like to tell us what ARB is doing?
Our only matter of business this month was interviewing for vacancies, so I'll hold my comments until item 6C.
Okay. Mr. Crisco, anything going on with Van Cleve or parks or anything on your end?
Would like to thank Kit Decker, a professor at Piedmont Virginia Community College, very active volunteer for the town. A couple of weeks ago, he had 10 Piedmont students helping him do some work in the area on, in Main Creek. And those of you who don't know, Kit has been somebody who's been extremely active in helping over the years in the Van Cleve nature area and a lot of projects in the town. He's an incredible volunteer. So just a lot of thanks to the students who came out here, also to Kit, and to let you know that we will have other volunteer efforts coming up.
Thank you, yeah. I joined that group just to, to say thank you and appreciation from the town for what they were doing. There was one young man down in the creek with the chainsaw clearing, when that, when that storm came through the end of July, did a lot of, a lot of damage over there. And so it was really nice to have them here to help clean up that damage. Ms. Lambert, Planning Commission, what's going on?
We've had a few things this week just since the work session that have come up. One of the days last week, Mayor Ron and Mr. Lawless and myself met with a local developer that has some land that they own here, quite a few acres, and they're looking actually to develop it into affordable, not affordable, but mixed income homes. And had a discussion with them about that. We don't have a lot of details yet. We look forward to actually finding out more about that. We also received a confirmation letter from Habitat for Humanity. They were reaching out to the town many months ago, about six months ago, but they've confirmed that they do want to and are willing to do a project in Scottsville, partnering with the developers. So that was good news to hear as well. And we also have begun conversations with Virginia Land Company about reducing the density on their special use permit for Bird Street. And so we are in conversation about that as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Planning Commission? Thank you. Since Ms. Hines doesn't have a committee yet, which that's going to change here shortly. Is anything about, anything you'd like to talk about right at the moment?
No.
Anything town related? I'll put it town related, okay? Mr. Munson, how, how's economic development going?
Got a couple of things in the works. We're still waiting to hear from the state of Virginia to see if we have been approved for our small business development grant, which, as we recall, there's a program where we will offer a sort of educational, short educational program to applicants, help them develop a business plan, it's for a business that would go into one of our, these storefronts. And then a panel of successful Scottsville entrepreneurs will select, select some of them, and they will receive a grant to start their business in those storefronts. So hopefully we'll hear from them sometimes, and we've been expecting it every month, so I may have to report the same thing for a next month. Would also like to thank the folks from We Grow for adding another event to our holiday calendar year. We can have a, a Dogtober or a Dog Rock and a Dog Costume Podcast here in Scottsville on Friday of the 29th before the play. So we'll have a lot of things to do, hopefully, to talk.
Stuart, just a question for you. I'm not familiar with this Dogtober. Can you explain Dogtober?
Sure. Sure. The idea is to encourage dog owners from around the area to bring the dogs down and walk them or actively provide them several different options for walking. So there's the included, there's the left wheel. And we have the historic walking tour that they can walk around. So there's a variety of things. We'll have, the folks at We Grow are going to be offering some gifts or prizes for, for a dog costume show that we have here. That's going to happen between five and seven. The play starts at seven, and you'll be able to, to take food and beverages down to Van Cleve, or sorry, down to Canal Basin Square during that period. So we'll be able to walk around in town. So we have to encourage anyone with a dog to come on.
Can I bring my cat? I don't have a dog.
If you dare.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Munson?
No, but like, thank you for sharing that, and special thanks to We Grow and the We Grow people. Appreciate the innovation and like, and piggybacking on another local event. I think that's really a great, a great thing for us to take advantage of. So thank you.
And we are, we are making arrangements to utilize our ABC license again for that event and cordon off a pathway so that people might be able to purchase food and a, a frosty beverage somewhere and take it to Canal Basin for consumption. So that should be for a nice evening. Everything went really well with the scan event at the end of September. The art in the windows, follow-up report on that. There was no, nobody misbehaved. There was no problems with the, carrying the alcohol around. Everybody followed the rules, and I think we got high marks from the ABC for the way we handled things. So we're going to try it again the end of this month. Mr. Payne, do you have anything for us?
Well, we had some informal discussions that we all know about the minutes in the town and the building services and public health and safety duties over there in a lot of places. And I think we could probably merge the two, and it would be a more fair commitment. So we've got to focus about that.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds like a logical way to go with, instead of trying to find two committee chairman for two committees that basically are subcommittees of one another, you know, work or part of one another, let's put it that way. So any questions of anyone from, anybody on the council? And we'll move on to item number six, election of the vice mayor. The vice mayor has a position of taking over for the mayor when the mayor's not available, obviously. And we have done it both ways in the past, kind of traditionally, the person that got the most votes was named vice mayor. Well, town ordinance says that the council elects a president of the town council, and the president serves as vice mayor. So that's what we're going to do this time around, since we have a vacancy for vice mayor. So the way this thing is going to have to work, since it is a public discussion and a public action, we can't have a secret vote or a secret ballot. So I will open the floor for nominations for the position of vice mayor of the town council of Scottsville. Do I hear a motion?
I like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to nominate Dan Gritso for vice mayor of Scottsville.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion on Dan?
No, but I'd like to make comment.
Yes, sir.
I think Dan, first and foremost, is a really wonderful voice for this town. I've been reflecting after our last work session, that Dan has a, a unique ability to frame things, I think, in the interests of this place, and Dan is the longest-serving member of this body. He has also been a member of this body through a number of development projects. From Streetscape, sort of council-initiated, and you watched that happen, sort of the good sides and the bad sides. He's also been instrumental in our largest park, which has also involved a lot of development questions. And he's worked closely with state agencies, as well as the members of this community and this body to move those projects forward. And I think that with more development projects looming, I would like to have Dan as a voice sort of out front representing us as vice mayor through that, through that period.
I would like to have Dan as a voice sort of out front representing us as Vice Mayor through that, through that period.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bullock, any other comments on the nominee? Are there any more nominations from the council? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. We can vote by raising our hands, or we can have a motion to elect Dan unanimously as our Vice Mayor position, President of the Council. Do I hear such a motion?
I move that we elect Dan in this race council.
Is there a second? And is it duly seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor, or do we need to call a vote? Okay, may I have a show of hands of those who are in favor of that motion?
I think I said recuse.
It is, vote is unanimous, the motion is passed, Dan, it will be our President of the Council and Vice Mayor of the Council. And congratulations, Mr. Crisco.
Thank you. Do you mind if I say something?
Well, it has not stopped you before.
I just want to say two things. First of all, I want to say thank you for what you said. I think that meant a lot to me personally. And I, I would say this to all of you on the council and also to those watching. I, all I want to say when I thought about this and I'm not Laura Malusi. Laura's an amazing town councillor who just was our Vice Mayor. And she brought a just incredible amount of gifts and talent. What I will say, I do feel like I want to fight for the town, so to speak. That's kind of my, and I really think we have a great council and that we work together. And I don't know that Vice Mayor is anymore than I'm just another voice up here, other than the fact that hopefully if I use it as Vice Mayor at some point, we, I'm representing all of our voices and all of your voices. And, and I appreciate, Matthew, what you also said before, because I think there really is a balance between understanding those who live in the town, those who have business in the town, those who come here in the town. And it's an important interplay in terms of what we do. So, thank you, everything.
Well, thank you. Look forward to working even more with you than I have in the past. We, I came on council as an appointee in 2010, and you were elected in 2010. So while we've both not served on the council, I haven't served the whole time like you have been a member of council. We have still been involved in the town for that number of years. And so it's going to be a pleasure to continue that association.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6B is Town Council Committee Assignments. When I ask at the work session if you were not happy with your committee or you wanted to change, let me know. No one email me or let me know that they were not happy with what they were doing. So here is, let me just make sure, Mr. Bullock, you're okay staying with ARB? Crisco's got Parks and he's going to, he's going to fit tourism in there too and see what he can do. Ms. Lambert has Planning Commission, and that's a full-time job. So I think she is going to stick with that. Meredith Hines has indicated she would like to be our Events Chairman, Committee Chairman, which is great because they work closely with SCAN and Chamber and anybody else that wants to put on a program or some sort of function for the town. So now she can kind of overlap maybe with Dan on tourism, if he can give her some pointers on, on that. So we appreciate that. Mr. Munson has indicated that economic development is his field, and he would like to stick with that. And I had a nice chat with Mr. Payne earlier, and you heard what he said a few moments ago about government services and public safety going hand in hand. And he has agreed to be Chairman of the Public, of the Government Services Committee, which will include both Government Services and Public Safety. So. Do we have to do anything else, then? Do we have to vote on Committee Assignments for good? Okay, they are assigned, and we thank you very much for your volunteerism.
Ron?
Yes.
Do we have a Chair of Farmers Market? Do we know how that's, who's, do we need a point person for that on council or?
Caitlin, someone.
The other ones that Laura was doing were the vendors or the Farmers Market and Government Services. So that, you're right, that is the one left off there.
The other question, I guess, is do we need one? Or do we feel, and this might be a question for town staff, do we need a council liaison with Farmers Market? Or do we feel that our current Farmers Market manager is enough to satisfy that role?
Thank you, thank you for asking. And Caitlin Walls is here on the call. And I'd ask her to unmute and share, share some thoughts with us. In the, in the past, we had asked a, a member of council to help with that, the market manager on staff, to help recruit vendors, promote the business activity of the market. And if the market needed anything, from advertising to fiscal repairs, to serve as a liaison advocate for the market on council. Josh Peck had that role before Laura did. And he was very active in convening the start of season and end of season briefing and debriefing of the vendors. I, I think that Ms. Walls and I could take that on as staff work if necessary. But if that, if that kind of thing appeals to anyone on council, we welcome that help. And everything from recruiting vendors to making ad campaigns, to taking a look at that building with us, making sure it holds up for a couple of years. What do you think?
Well, personally, I think that here at the end of the season, we just continue like we're doing right now. And then think about it over the next six months until it's time to get Farmers Market cranked up again. And make a decision then as to whether we want a council person involved with the market manager, or have the market manager be the sole person in charge and report any needs, wants, or desires to the council.
Okay. We also appreciate seeing so many members of council there on, on the regular. And I know you have those opportunities to see how it's going and see if that is.
And if the Farmers Market Manager decides they would like to start a Farmers Market Committee, as, as a sort of another official group of people to help that person with the running of the market, recruiting vendors and addressing problems, they're certainly free to do it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, we thank her for all she's done so far, stepping in for, for Debbie.
Great.
Yes.
We'll check that in.
Yeah, sometime around the first of the year, after we get through the first of the year, let's talk about what we want to do next year.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before Mr. Phil vacancy on the Planning Commission and ARB. Matt, you want to kind of tell us what's going on with those two organizations?
I defer to the, to the Planning Commission chair.
Since I deferred my previous comments. The ARB has had, has had a total of three positions that we need to have filled out of five. And we have to have a resident majority membership of the ARB. It doesn't matter what role those people serve, but we need to have at least three of those people on the board be town residents. So that, that's our situation. At this, we've had applicants. And at this point, we'd like to move forward with nom, or appointing rather, Erin Root to continue and in another term, who has been serving capably on the ARB. She's currently our member with architectural background, which is needed, both in buildings and, but mostly in landscaping. And then we had an interview with Robert Lambert, who would also like to recommend for, to be appointed to ARB. He is both a town resident and has significant background in renovation, historic renovation properties and some contracting experience, which I also think will be helpful in conversations with property owners as we talk about fixing our homes in town and maintaining them. At this time, we have, we have enough applicants to fill the spots, but for the third spot, we'd like to delay appointment simply because we are moving forward with a certified local government designation. And in order to get that certified local government designation, we need to have an actual, factual licensed architect on the board. And the board feels that we have not yet done our due diligence in trying to recruit one. So what we'd like to do, we have enough people to do the board's business, right, and have a quorum and vote. But we'd like to delay for at least one month the filling of that vacancy to see if we can get some interest from a licensed architect. And we have some leads. And then in November, vote for an appointment and see if we can't get a licensed architect. If we can't, I think the board will have a discussion about what it means to, in good faith, which is the certified local government's words, in good faith to seek a licensed architect at that point, and I'll come back to you.
Now, the licensed architect position does not have to be a town roster.
It does not.
Okay. So if anybody knows any licensed architects, you can twist their arm.
Thank you.
So do we vote on anybody tonight for that?
Yes, sir.
So I just make a motion to appoint both those people?
Yes.
Great. I would like to make a motion to appoint Erin Root to the Architectural Review Board.
Okay, any discussion on Erin? She's done a good job so far.
Yeah, that's great.
No discussion, then, all in favor of Erin's appointment to the ARB? Say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, Erin says one slot.
All right, our second appoint, I'd like to move to appoint Robert Lambert to the Scottsville ARB.
Is there a second?
I'll second that too.
And is there any discussion on Mr. Lambert? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Good. So you only have one slot left. That's good. Thank you, Zach, for all that the ARB does.
And thank you to our volunteers for coming forward. It takes a, it takes a town to run this town. And I think Laura Malusi, our former Vice Mayor, told me that something like 10% of the town serves in the town in some capacity. And so it really matters that people come forward and volunteer and take their turn on these committees. It truly is a town government of its citizens. So thank you.
Well, it is, because I have a friend that moved here from Connecticut. And when he found out that none of us get paid, he couldn't believe it. But we do it because we love the town and we're volunteers. So. Moving to Planning Commission, Ms. Lambert, do you have vacancies?
Yes, we currently have one seat open. And it's a very busy time, as you all know, for Planning Commission with all of the opportunities that have been presented to us recently. And so we were really hoping that someone would come forward that had a lot of experience either with business or with just public relations, those types of things. And we were able to get an applicant in Molly Antivine, who we have a lot of confidence will be able to come on to the Planning Commission and bring all those strengths. She works at UVA. She's also a photographer. She just has a very wide and varied background. And besides that, it's a whole lot of fun to just be engaged with. And she's very involved in the public and has served in so many different capacities since she's been here for four years. So she's our applicant.
And she's with us this evening.
Yes, sir.
Yes, would you like to say a few words? Where did you come forward? Molly is also, Molly is also a big supporter of SCAN too, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so I wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to work with the Planning Commission. I've already attended several of the meetings, obviously, and it is a very busy time, very exciting for the town. And in the four years that I've been here, I've worked with the Events Committee. And I just, I feel a part of the town. I feel part of the family. It's a community here, especially here in town. And I just want to be a part of watching it grow and, and helping to make sure that it grows in the right way. And so I think I can accomplish that on the Planning Commission. I'm really excited for the opportunity.
We appreciate you stepping forward and offering your services. And so it's been, have we already moved a second in this? No motion yet. So do I hear a motion that we appoint Molly to the Planning Commission vacancy?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Molly Antivine to the vacant seat on the Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Okay, and any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Appreciate you so much. All right, that brings us to item number 6D, the Columbia Gas Franchise Ordinance. Matt, you want to fill everybody in on that again?
The, the gas franchise ordinance sets sort of rules of engagement for Columbia Gas operating their utility monopoly in town. It's, it's an agreement that the town has adopted in the name several times over the past history, but expired some time ago. So Columbia Gas and the town noticed this and presented the document before you, which is their industry standard across the state. The main variable in it is the term. How, how often do you want to revisit this matter? At work session, we considered that since possible issues were changing pretty quickly in their markets and infrastructure, looking at this more often would be advisable. Columbia Gas agrees and looks at a 10-year term in this, in this contract, where in other instances, they've moved to much longer terms. I'll let their staff maybe say a few words about it as well. Mr. Ruskin has been very helpful in putting this together. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Wallace. And I thank you, Mayor Smith and town council members. My name is Matthew Ruskin, and on behalf of Columbia Gas, I want to thank you for your consideration of this measure. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the residents and businesses of Scottsville. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. And thank you for your service to the town of Scottsville.
Okay, thank you for being with us this evening. Any questions for Mr. Ruskin? I think we went over it pretty thoroughly at the work session. So do I hear a motion that we accept this ordinance that is presented now with a 10-year timeframe instead of a 40-year timeframe like was in it originally?
So, all right, I've put that forward.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Payne, seconds now. Is there any further discussion or any questions for Mr. Ruskin?
So are we entering into this 10-year agreement? Is there, is there any instance where we would want to get out of it before the 10 years, and what would happen if we did?
What's the, what's the term, what is the early termination rule, sir?
It says it in there, and I, I believe there's some negotiations that take place over taking over facilities. We strongly recommend against that just because of the safety practices around actually maintaining those gas facilities. It's something that is a high standard and takes a lot of skill qualifications to do. And so really, this agreement, what it actually kind of sets forward more is actually ways to avoid, to make sure that does not happen. That, you know, that we're working with the town constantly, whether it's on any issues kind of in the public right of way, that we're consulting the town as we do work.
Thank you. What, I'm sorry, since we asked, what about the opposite case there? Columbia Gas doesn't want to business here anymore? Or is this, is this agreement obligate you to provide the service for 10 years? What, what if you decide this is not a profitable market?
You know, I actually don't know if I can answer that one off the top of my head. And I can see Patrina is here as well, and she might be able to answer that as well. So I'll turn it over to her.
Hi, I'm Katrina Jones-Rableski. I'm manager of Government and Public Affairs. We do have an obligation to serve the town of Scottsville through the State Corporation Commission. So any changes to that agreement, or rather, understanding or obligation would have to be something that the State Corporation Commission would be involved in.
That's, okay, that, that makes sense. That, that's in this agreement in section seven, that the grantee Columbia Gas guarantees that it will maintain this service and comply with the State Corporation Commission rulings, including being bound by the rates that you have to provide the service during this period of time. So the agreement doesn't provide for like a termination agreement directly within the agreement. If either party want to terminate, that's something we can pursue through the State Corporation Commission. Correct?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? It's been moved and seconded, and there are no further comments, so I'll ask Mr. Unsworth to call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Grisco?
Yes.
Councilor Lambert?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
And Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, the motion carries six to the line.
Okay, thank you.
Your guys' consideration.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Marcus's name up there, so we'll move on to item, uh, six E, the CSX property maintenance agreement. Uh, Matt, you wanna fill us in again, again on that one?
Yes, thank you. This, this is a, um, a simple amendment to the existing property maintenance agreement that the town and CSX have. Um, we've been working for two years together to maintain a corridor of property, um, along the edge of Route Six, that's old now. Restoring the native plants and beautifying assets, looking for, um, Black Hat Susan and other native wildflower bulbs to go in place there soon. Now that we've got some of those weeds under control. The document before you now modifies that amendment by adding the CSX railroad depot, um, to the property list that we can work on together and exchange. CSX has been, um, generous and proactive with the town and community partnership grants to help us with this work. And certainly look to, um, continue to apply for those. Randy Marcus, in addition to working on government relations, lobbying ambition, also helps to coordinate that grant making activity to localities like Scottsville. And I appreciate his working with us to, um, uh, resolve the issue with this work and it's on the depot.
Okay. Any questions for Matt, or any further, any discussion, or questions for Mr. Marcus?
In concerns of maintenance for the actual building, is the, uh, the railroad, uh, paying us or reimbursing us for any expenses that will be incurred in doing that?
The, the agreement is permission for the town's volunteers and contractors to be onsite and to work on it. Their, um, community grant application process is separate. Um, we, we've had good success applying for those grants, and I, I will continue to do that. This agreement does not provide any funding.
Okay.
I, i- and, um, you know, I, sorry, I, members of the, I counsel, I am Randy Marcus with CSX Transportation. Um, you know, that, a- as we did with the beautification along Route Six, um, that, that, you know, I, I think that, that, uh, you know, we'll look fondly upon an application to support some of, some of the beautification of the depot. Uh, you know, I think this is a logical extension of that partnership. And it gives, it really gives the community an opportunity to have the depot, um, you know, be the, you know, welcoming feature to, to the, to the town that I know that you all desire. And for us to be a small part of that, so that, that, so appreciate everyone's time, and I hope that the council will look on this favorably.
So, any further discussion before I ask for a motion that we enter into this agreement?
I think just sort of for the public and sort of so that they know what we're, what we're getting after here. I think Ms. Lambert's point's good about continuing to seek funding, and I know Mr. Marcus has supported that as well, so we can do the work we need to. The interest in maintaining the depot comes from the architectural review board, and that the depot itself's been rated poor in our inventory because it's unsealed. Um, which could eventually, structural issues particularly relating to the roof. And so the ARB's interest is in shoring up the outside of the structure, that's really what we're interested in. Um, and so for this agreement will give the town, um, access so that we can hire a contractor to get in, to do the work, to bring up the exterior to a suitable condition.
And obviously, it's one of the first things you see when you come in from the east.
That's right.
And it's always been, it's been a nice, or for fourteen years of it here, so now maybe we can do something about that. Any other discussion? Motion to accept this agreement?
And then we accept this agreement?
And is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Unsworth?
Uh, Councilor Wolf?
Yes.
Councilor Grisco?
Yes.
Councilor Lambert?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yeah.
Thank you all very much, the motion carries six to the line.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody, see you soon.
Thanks.
Uh, the last item is the continu- continuity, interesting word, continuity of government ordinance. Basically, I think Matt isn't just saying that we can continue having Zoom meetings if we need to for how long?
Uh, for another sixty days.
Another sixty days.
We have a, we have a close stringing of these kinds of emergency hours because they modify the normal information act. But you, we're, we're glad to have members of the public and the whole council here tonight, that if any of you needed to quarantine or stay home, um, and participate remotely, this is the tool that lets you do that.
Yeah, so it's always good to have it and not need it, and then need it and not have it, so. Do we have a motion to, uh, extend our emergency ordinance for another sixty days?
Yeah, I'm going to extend our emergency ordinance for another sixty days.
And the second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment, one other thing for the public. We had this ordinance, then we dropped this ordinance, then we went back to having it again, and the value of having it. Even though thankfully COVID is, seems to be slowly moving in the right direction. It's an unpredictable thing, and it does, as the mayor said before, give us options, and it makes it accessible to. Anybody who wants to be a part of the meeting, and it makes it easier for us to be accessible wherever we are, and so it's. Maybe it'll prove not to be necessary, but as the mayor said, it's much better to have it, and I think it's a great idea to keep it.
Thank you, well said.
Is this the only, uh? Thing we can discuss about emergency ordinance, just the way we have this hour of Zoom meetings discussed allow, um, you know. You know, let's take those past last year that allows towns like us, towns like this, but did any other more stuff mean?
We're, we're not using any other emergency powers, um, that's a good question. Um, at the very beginning of pandemic, I was worried about things like supply shortages, that if. If hand sanitizer could not be brought any other way, I needed the ability to get a last bottle of hand sanitizer from food buying, so that the police department could use it. And we didn't, um, not only were our supply chains a better than, um, so there aren't any other, uh, state involved emergency powers that staff here we need to do more work. It just relates to how the body of town council conducts its business.
And, and just to follow up on what our town administrator just said, he's referring to the fact that. You have to be present to be in a meeting, and this gives us the ability to be anywhere, at least in this ordinance.
That's right. But it's, it's otherwise business as usual in terms of, um, budgeting and, um, payroll staffing, how do you wanna base it?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and discussed, so Mr. Unsworth, would you call for the vote?
Sir. Councilor Wolf?
Yes.
Councilor Grisco?
Yes.
Councilor Lambert?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, the motion carries six to the line.
Thank you. Item seven is staff reports, uh, Matt, do you have anything further you need to call us this evening?
I'd, um, I'd like to introduce the, um, the newest member of our team here. The council has had, uh, great success over the past couple of years with undergraduate and graduate interns. We're, we're lucky to have such strong universities so close by, and especially with a, um, a busy docket of planning commission items coming up. I think the experience of a graduate planner, um, is very helpful. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Christopher Warren, um, a, um, Scottsville native, uh, BCU graduate student. He, uh, he knows this area physically better than I do, and has depth of, um, planning expertise that I do not. Um, so I, I look forward to his, his help on some of the site planning, is there any work that you have coming up? Would you have to say a little bit about yourself and work?
I'm appreciative to be able to, to get involved in, in town more, I currently live in the, on, I'm too far away. I'm, you know, went to the planning council meeting, uh, the other week, and very excited to see the. All of what's happening in the town, and I'm looking forward to be more involved with that, and providing what I can and also learning, uh, as much as I can.
That's great, good to have you with us, welcome aboard. So, anything else, Matt, or Mr. Unsworth, you have anything to tell us?
Uh, I do, if, if Matt has nothing else, please, okay. Um, uh, we need to get some dates on the calendar for the, uh, joint meeting with the board of supervisors. A few of you have answered that survey, but if you don't mind calling out your calendars, um, I'd like to hammer this out tonight if we can. Four of you have responded to the survey so far, and it seems like Tuesday, November ninth, and Tuesday, November sixteenth are unanimous among those of you who have. So, um, those of you who are not yet, do either of those two dates present a problem? Second, okay. Um, I think what we're gonna need to do here is probably present a couple of dates to the board and see what works with them, so I'd like to give them a few options. So here are no objections to those two Tuesdays, uh, seven, yeah, I'll start there, uh, suggest those, and if, uh, that doesn't work for any reason, I'll come back around it and, uh, we'll see where we can do. The most of you in, of the other day.
So the ninth and the sixteenth?
Ninth and the sixteenth for the two unanimous dates that we have so far, so we'll, uh, any frankness or they could.
Yep.
Thank you all very much.
And for those of you who weren't, uh, around when we did this first joint meeting, when was it last fall?
That's right, a year ago.
Not a year ago, uh, I think it really made the board of supervisors sit up and take notice that we were down here. And that we could work with other people, and that we would, uh, they could work with us, and I think they got a new, a new respect for the southern end of Alamo County after that meeting, you just felt that way.
Um, and when they're working, sir.
Will this be an in-person meeting or assume and reading our mask, if that, uh, we're not gonna cover any government business? And we did have two supervisors here, D and B, on two of the six. So, um, if we have to stay in preference, I'd like, you know, for it to be a personal meeting.
Sure.
And even location.
Um, I'll, I'll look at that and see what, uh, their practice is right now, if they might still only be meeting remotely, um.
But they are.
They, okay, so we'll see what they do, but I would stay prepared, especially.
Yeah.
My, they are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, do you wanna cover some of the government services?
Yeah, um, the, um, I, I appreciate, um, Mr. Payne sticking up government services committee, um, that's, that's one that, um. Laura was very active in, along with, um, Frank Sherwood and Scottsville in particular, uh, community members with a real eye for. Finance and HR and, um, IT issues, um, that can be, um, real troubling for staff, so we, we really appreciate the help. And that does often touch on police, they have as much need for the finance and HR and IT issues as anywhere else, so that, that works well. That group has been thinking heavily about the town's financial future. Um, we saw a little bit of that presentation at the beginning of the year when Laura brought some capital forecasting that she had worked on in her committee, uh. Just sort of listing the same, the items that the town has, and if those things need to be replaced over a few years, how much will all of that cost? And how does that cost compared to the amount of money that the town? They've continued to do a little bit more work on that sort of scenario planning, and are, um, are getting closer to some recommendations that can lead into the, um. The regular budget cycle of the town. Uh, but, uh, that committee we'd like to meet up, um, uh, closer with you all and separate from work sessions. So we'll, we'll try to make some invitations for, um, offline meetings, um, two of you at a time is a good opportunity for us to. Um, work on some of the finances in detail without having a special meeting. So we'll keep in touch about your availability on that, um, and share some of the financial data that we've got. It's, it's nothing dire or catastrophic, but it does take a little bit more time to go into. Um, and, uh, we're keen to hear about, you know, individual interests and, and goals for projects and sort of how you think about the town's finances. Before we go to work session together, we'll know a little bit better how it stands.
It'll help the staff kind of inform where we're going before we start putting hours in together, the budget forecasts together for those big work sessions. If we can schedule at least for the end of this month, before next month's work session, it would also give us an opportunity to, to speak a little bit about this upcoming board supervisor meeting. And if there are any particular areas, uh, of importance to be focused on, we'll be, we'll, we'll track them, we'll stop them once last year, so.
We'll give it a try, but Scott, Scott Treadle in particular, he's the, um, he's the treasurer for his, um, condo association where he, where he vacations. And that, uh, condo community has a, has a budget pretty similar to the town's. And, uh, so he, he's in a very satisfied, and he will think about, you know, how should we organize this, and, uh, think about what we wanna get done in the future. So I really appreciate his help.
Great.
Okay, did you still wanna do a picture tonight?
Uh, if, uh, if you feel like it, we have some, um, we have some gaps on that, on that wall.
We have some open spots on the wall, but we need pictures, and we haven't had a picture of the town council all together for a long time, so. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting if nobody has anything else, but I've asked the council just to hang around long enough for a picture, and I can guarantee to the public, we're not gonna discuss anything. Hear a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for attending, public.